Haven City Council regular meeting to order for October 7, 2025 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Roll call. Sean.
I'm here.
Alicia.
Here.
Brad Smith.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Larry.
Brad Simmons.
Steven Mooney's here and Ashley Wills.
Here.
And three people in the audience. This time we'll have the invocation with Alicia and the pledge with Sean.
Dear heaven Father, I just want to thank you for giving us this day that you've given each and every one of us here. Lord, I just ask that you continue to watch over and guide us as we make the best decision for our community. Lord, I give you all the praise and the glory. Amen.
Okay, item number three. Additions, deletions, or corrections?
Yes, I'd like to add on the replacement of the water treatment plant there. There is a paper's way in there. We got three quotes. We want one or two for Superior Contracting in South Florida as the I just wanted to add that to four A.
Okay. If we make that four E.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Four E or four A? This is all four?
Yeah. So if I go down to the E.
It just needs to be four A, right?
Yeah.
Because we always do this. It's just one item.
On four A. I thought we had every one of them, another.
Uh-uh.
Okay. We get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sean.
Second.
Seconded by Mark to add agenda, add the roof contracting contract. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So let's go ahead with that, Larry.
Okay. Like I discussed before, the water treatment plant, the roof, it was, there were some patches sitting down a long, quite a long time ago. But that's, it's long since deteriorated. Like I said, they are starting, this started late. And they concerned there and we go that SCADA equipment's in there. You know, it's a kind of equipment, so it's certainly susceptible to any kind of water damage. So we did draw up a quote. We got a quote from Superior Contracting in an amount of $10,100. We've got a quote from Smart Roofing of Southwest Florida, an amount of $18,000. And we got a quote from Bryant Roofing, an amount of $20,400. So we're questioning the award to Superior Contracting, an amount of $10,100 as the lowest quote received for that part.
Motion to award a roof work to Superior Contracting, so far, a close.
Motion by Mark. Seconded by Sean. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, next item. Discuss and approve the following meeting minutes. September 2, 2025 Budget Workshop Meeting. Motion by Brad Smith. Seconded by Mark. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. September 25 tentative budget meeting minutes. Motion one.
Okay.
Seconded by Alicia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
September 3, 2025 Special Meeting Minutes.
Motion to accept September 3 Special Meeting Minutes.
Motion by Mark. Seconded by Alicia. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion, September 15, 2025 Final Budget Meeting Minutes.
Make a motion. Yep, September 15, Budget Meeting Minutes.
Motion by Sean.
Second.
Mark, seconded by Mark to accept the September 15, 2025 Final Budget Meeting Minutes. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five. Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 361 for the Regulation of Fences Within the City Limits.
So this is the ordinance number 361, an ordinance of the city of More Haven, Florida, providing for the regulation of fences within city limits, establishing permit requirements, limiting heights and materials, providing for location placement and gate access, prohibiting certain materials and electrified fencing, barring site plan review for non-residential fencing industrial districts, providing for enforcement, penalty severability, and an effective date. 我们将 replacing ordinance number 217 and it's in tight.
Motion to approve second reading 361.
Motion by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Brad Smith to approve second reading of an adoption of ordinance 361 Regulation of Fences Within the City Limits. Is there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number six. Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number 362 Regarding Updating Water Rates.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to do a little power presentation to show you what it's all about.
Alright.
Actually, I'll just ask you to move forward into the next slide. There we go. So, good evening, council members, mayor, city manager. My name's Priscilla Segalik. I'm Craig A. Smith. We were retained to perform a rate study and a rate sufficiency study, both for the city of More Haven and for city county public works, for their wastewater rates. So tonight I'm here to present on the water rates. I do want to stress that the rates have been unchanged since 2014. You know, we're 11 years to having the same rates. So if you'll advance to the next slide, you'll see what those rates currently are. And so this is what's currently being charged. And these are distributed amongst the various meter sizes. Next slide, please. Here are the institutional accounts. These are the monthly base charges per contract. Next slide, please. And so right now, this is all defined based on one equivalent residential connection. One equivalent residential connection is defined as 151 gallons per day. We are seeing that our consumption rates are higher at this time. And part of what I'll discuss tonight is what we would define that ERC rate as of today. Next slide, please. The current rate's $3.53 per 1,000 gallons. Again, this was established back in 2013 and has remained unchanged. Part of the ordinance had intended to do a rate escalation over an annual period. And had that escalation actually occurred, we would currently be at a $7.46 rate per 1,000 gallons since 2013. So just to give you an idea of where we are today, you know, we're, you know, $3.53 still. Next slide, please. In this time, since the last rate adjustment in 2014, we've had a number of economic disruptions. And as you are aware, this has significantly increased the cost of our goods or services, our labor, construction costs. And you can just see from this graph, you know, what those disruptions have been, beginning in 2020 through 2022, significant increases in, in costs. And in that time as well, due to federal regulation, you know, a lot of utilities were unable to connect, collect revenues in that time because we had to continue to provide services. So we had a lot of revenue losses in that time. Next slide, please. And so this just kind of illustrates our net position here at the city of More Haven. You can see your unrestricted fund balance has decreased and your net position has decreased. So this just shows an outflow that is, you know, not being covered by the revenue that you're generating from your water services. The cost drivers, personnel, as we've discussed, our labor costs have increased. Benefits and insurance, that seems to be the largest driver, right? And we feel that across all industries. Chemical costs for treatment has increased and overall expenditures are increasing. And we're seeing the revenue declining. So what you're, what you're seeing overall are impacts, not just from reduced sales, but the cost of everything going up to provide the same services you've been providing. Next slide, please. And here's what that revenue trend looks like. Revenue declining 3% annually, expenses increasing. And then you continue to have those pressures, right? Inflation and salary adjustments, cost of living increases.
Excuse me, just a minute. Is there any way we can cut this slide off? I'm getting so much flair that I can't even.
I gotta figure out which one it is.
There you go.
One more. It's that one right there. There it is. Thank you.
Next slide. Some good news. So recently, city of More Haven was appropriated $2.5 million towards improvements at the plant. However, I do want to note that there's over five, almost $5.5 million worth of needs at the plant. So that just covers a fraction of the overall need. You also still have outstanding revenue bonds that are due through 2052. And your deferred maintenance continues to grow. The financial requirements of that USDA loan requires that you have a coverage rate of 1.10. So your net operating income over your total debt service must remain above 1.1. So what we see when you have declining revenue is that you're not meeting your coverage ratio on that debt service. So a quick summary of what I've just illustrated here is that, and you know, the rate has remained unchanged since 2014. There's an unsustainable downward trend in the water fund and your capital needs continue to grow. Next slide, please. So let's get into the approach to the study. Overall, what we're looking to do is to fund the operations, your debt service, renewal and replacement of your equipment that you currently have, you know, in operation today. Ensure equity across your residential, commercial, and industrial classes and provide, you know, some data-driven rate information to you. Next slide, please. Essentially, what it breaks down to is thirds. You have a third residential, a third commercial, and a third institutional. Next slide. The fixed base charge, you know, those cover the fixed costs, whereas the commodity charge is meant to cover your variable costs. So your usage costs. The, the more water demand you have, the more chemical demand you have, those kinds of variable costs. So the fixed base charge covers your labor and those fixed costs that you, you're going to have to cover regardless of how much water you're selling. But your commodity charge will change by the amount of gallons you sell. Next slide, please. And the way that this has been established for this utility is based on the AWWA standard of the demand factor for each of these meters, right? So a three-quarter inch meter, which is your standard residential meter, is the one equivalent residential connection. And then as you go up in size, on your meter size, you have a multiplier. So for example, if you're at a two-inch meter, you're at a 5.3 multiplier of a standard residential meter. Next slide. Additionally, what we evaluated when we looked at the flow data was that we are seeing higher consumption rates. So right now, your standard consumption had been established at 151 gallons per day. We're actually seeing that your new average daily flows are about 185 gallons per day on these standard residential meters. Something else that we noted was there were 61 high-use three-quarter inch commercial accounts. We thought it would be prudent to go out and evaluate those meters and ensure they were actually three-quarter inch account, three-quarter inch meters, because the consumption rates were very high on those meters. And something that we might look to do in the future is look at evaluating different rate structures for those higher use customers who end up using more than what would be typical for a residential meter. For example, 4,000 to 6,000 gallons per day is essentially what we would classify as standard use. Whereas these, I'm sorry, gallons per month is, is what would be standard. However, we're seeing 61 high-use meters on these residential accounts. And then here, these contractual ERCs. This is currently what's established for these institutional accounts. Next slide, please. So again, those fixed costs, that covers your personnel costs, your debt service, any inter-fund transfers that you make to support your citywide services, your human resources, whatever services provide a contribution towards your, your water operations. The commodity charge is used to recover all the variable costs tied to your, your water sales. Next slide. And just to give you a snapshot of what we saw from the fiscal year 2024 data. Your total revenue, $950,000, but your fixed expenses exceeded your revenue. Okay, $978,000 in fixed expenses. So that cost per ERC, your base cost to recover for the 978 for 2024 would have been $32.90. Your base of $32.04 a deficit. Okay, you're operating at a deficit. Next slide. Projecting for fiscal year 27. So essentially, what we looked at was we, you know, we took your 24 rates. We saw what the rate of change was over the course of the years. We made a projection for fiscal year 27 with a future value and project that you'll have fixed expenses in the, in the amount of $1.2 million. At $1.2 million, if you were to retain the current base rate, you would be running at a deficit of $294,000. So to recover that, yes.
$294 a year.
Per year, per year. So to recover that base cost, you need to increment your base to $41.95 per month to recover and have a base rate to cover your fixed expenses. Additionally, some additional recommendations that we would look at making is to implement some annual adjustment to, you know, make up for inflationary forces or cost of living increases that are, you know, established for your employees and essentially make it, you know, make it an automated annual indexing that follows either cost of living, CPI, some index that you can continue to make those adjustments. And then what I would recommend is that you continue to evaluate your operations. Continue to evaluate how you're performing every few years and ensure that you're covering your operational costs. So let's move on to the next slide here. So we're looking at a standard, you know, what, what is the impact here to our standard residential three-quarter inch meter? We're talking about a $9.91 per month increase on their average bill. That would have equated to about $118 per year to your standard residential. And of course, your commercial and your institutional customers are adjusted proportionally based on the size of their meter. Likewise, your institutional users. But that's just kind of a snapshot of what the impact would be to your residents. Go ahead. And then looking at your variable costs, right? The commodity charge that covers your treatment of the chemicals, your repairs and maintenance. It's estimated at the current rate, your revenues are going to be $494,000. So that, you know, this is essentially what you, what your projected revenue is for the current year. Let's, let's move on to the next slide. I'm sorry, that was fiscal year 24. So projected for fiscal year 2027, again, looking at the overall budget for fiscal year 27. You have a, essentially a gap to make up there of $768,000. And that comes out to $5.49 per 1,000 gallons. So again, that would be an adjustment from $3.53 to $5.49 per 1,000 gallons. And again, here, we want to monitor trends to ensure that we're keeping up with the cost of these variable costs essentially, you know, we, we don't know what's going to happen in the markets. Tariffs have an impact on chemical costs. Wars have an impact on all these things. So again, these are things that you need to, on a, on a fairly frequent basis, be monitoring. Next slide. So this is just your summary slide, but again, the rate structure today does not cover your operational costs. The water fund is operating at a deficit. Evaluating what your needs are based on your fixed costs for personnel and debt service. You need to increase your base charges to cover those costs projected for fiscal year 27 at an amount of $41.95 per equivalent residential connection. Your commodity charge does need to increase from $3.53 to $5.49 per 1,000 gallons sold. And this will help to balance your utility budget. Hopefully get you in compliance now with your debt service coverage and hopefully start building your reserves so that you can be able to make the necessary repairs as they come up, such as what you discussed this evening with your roofing needs, et cetera. You want those to come from your water fund, your enterprise funds to cover your, your utility needs. This is just a summary of what that impact is again on the standard residential. It's indicated that's about a $9 increase overall on their bill. This is what we'll see on their standard residential bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I see in the for the, for the ERC, it is at $1.85.
$185.
Yeah, excuse me. $185.
Yes, sir.
And so that, that'll then match with on the coverage for the bonds. So at the coverage of 1.10, what's being proposed will put us back in compliance with the bonds.
Yeah, because you're running at a deficit now. You need to have 10% in reserves and essentially to make up, that have that 1.1 ratio, right?
So we'll be back in compliance with our bonds.
Once you, once you build up that reserve, yeah.
Unless that's the base rate though, 41.95.
And all margins are, are enterprise funds, as you mentioned. Typically, that's business-type funds. One of the differences between the, the enterprise funds and, for example, the general fund is that you have to depreciate, you know, your, your assets in, in, in the enterprise funds. If, for example, the depreciation in the water is probably about $500,000 a year. So it's an expense. It's not a cash expense, but it's certainly an expense. So it's like, that makes, that accounting's a little bit different than, for example, the general fund. We, we don't appreciate the assets in the general fund without, they'll, you know, put, put new stuff in the car. You know, they don't get, they, they just don't get appreciated. But, but like I said, with enterprise funds, you have to, you're required to. That's going to be, always be an expense that's there.
Do we have any public comment?
What is the cost? What is the cost, standard cost per month for water now?
Thirty-two.
The base, the base charge is 32.04.
Yeah.
And it's going to go up to 41.95.
Now, that don't include over so many.
Yeah, that's just your base rate.
That's just your base.
Your water usage will go from, your water usage will go from 3.53 per 1,000 gallons to the 5.49 per 1,000 gallons.
Standardly, if you don't use any water.
If you don't use anything at all, yeah.
Anybody else? All right, Steve.
I'm gonna go ahead and read the ordinance. By title, excuse me, ordinance number 362, an ordinance of the city council of the city of More Haven, Florida, amending ordinance number 322, Chapter 115, Article 4, Section 19, Water of the city code of More Haven, Florida, amending the commodity rate charge, amending the monthly base charge and master meter charge, amending the equivalent residential connection rate and charge, providing a savings clause fulfilling all ordinances in conflict therewith, authority to codify, providing an effective data for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alicia, seconded by Brad Smith to to adopt ordinance 362 regarding water updates. Is there any questions?
I just want to make sure that we have it in there that we're automatically going to increase. I just found it in there. So I'm good.
Okay, any other questions?
So it's going to start on this, on this previous bill coming up.
The, it'll be on the next bill.
Next bill.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think the best way, and this is just a comment that we're, we're going to take some heat on this, but we haven't had an increase in 11 years. So I mean, it ain't something we want to do, but it is something we've got to.
The ones that they don't, they're not, don't know about it. So it's going to get hit out of the blue, which is.
It's been advertised in the paper. It's on our website, everything, so.
We don't have access to social media. Um, what paper?
The standard paper.
That's what we're required to do is the paper. Yeah.
We would probably need to generate a flyer if you get it out.
Yes.
Okay. Know that early, proper to increase. That way we, we don't jump.
We don't do, you're actually.
You know, this should have been.
This is something we should have been doing every year.
All of our rates that change, we need to implement something like this. It's automatic.
So.
Cost of living.
Alright, so let's do this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then Sean wants to make a motion that we send out a flyer to customers regarding ordinance 362. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brad Smith. Any questions? All in favor? Motion carries. You all right with that, Sean? I shouldn't have put you on the spot like that, but, okay. Okay. Item number seven, report of officer, city manager.
In your report, basically, the, our city YGIs mapping project's still ongoing. We're getting ready to, to go back out and do some updates to it. That's happening. The Marina Development, we accepted the, the visit by the developer here about a month ago. They're still, you know, kind of new plans that they can, are planning to to start with the first area along First Avenue there. So was putting up some buildings, one will be an office and a couple of the buildings to try to get something up and starting to, you know, be able to advertise, you know, do things like that. So, but they're, they're still going through the permitting process. And then the, the one with the state for broadband, they had the the program, the beach challenge program, which was, they provided, the state provided maps that showed unserved and underserved and underserved areas in the state. They had to redo the map. And they, they did. And because originally the, the new administration paused that program because it wasn't, there didn't seem to be enough activity going on in the program. So, so the state opened up the application process for, for those companies that wanted to bid on those, those areas. That, that process closed on August 4. And they, I did get an email from one of the companies that that they, that they, they had released the projects and that they thought they were going to be awarded some, some res, that's in our, our, our area. However, it's, it's still not, it's still very preliminary. I guess they have 90 days. There's a national
Two seven.
National agency, NTIA, that has, has 90 days to approve the full order plan. So that's kind of what's being done now, but like I said, that is a that they, that said, they are starting to release that data. Thought that the, the feds might have canceled the program entirely, but I said, it does go, it's back on track. So hopefully, like I said, we'll get some additional coverage for broadband in, in, in the city.
Okay, the Okay, anybody have anything for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Mr. City Attorney.
It's not necessarily a city. It's it's kind of more from cap to side, but I wanted just to bring your to your attention. Angela had contacted myself and Ken, our bond counsel at Guam. Was actually put out a new. Enable enable facilities engineering systems. So we being our team. Of the same contractors who we work with on Guam. We were going to put together a response to the request for proposal. And then I think at the next city meeting before we're going to have a cap for meeting, but I just wanted to bring to your attention so it doesn't. Catch you by surprise, but this might be a good opportunity for. We are awarded ultimately the contract for this military family housing, so. So I have.
Okay. Does anybody have anything for Larry? I'm sorry, Steve. Steve, where are we? Have we taken the two properties without saying which ones they are? To the magistrate yet? Are we Colleen working on that?
Not seeing anything coming from code enforcement.
I I talked to her today. We we got stuff.
Okay.
Getting to you.
Talked out a conversation with Richard Pringle about two weeks ago about coordinating again. Because they have a number of things that need to be raised, but if I don't get it from code enforcement, I can't do it.
I understand. Uh, Ms. Clark, do you have anything?
Um, I do have one thing. We have. We have an employee that has been out in the office and sometimes other employees have to take off. For whatever reason, a doctor's appointment or whatever, which leaves us with two employees in the office. We require two employees to stay in the office at all times. So when there's only, when there's a day when there's only two employees in the office. They can't take lunch breaks. So I'm running into a little bit of an issue with that because I don't want the city to continue to have to pay overtime for those missed lunch breaks. And I also want the employees to be able to take their lunch breaks, so. I'm requesting that we. Pick a time in the day, the least busiest time, maybe one to two o'clock. Closing for lunch like most other businesses in town do unless it's a convenience store or something like. Take a one to two o'clock lunch break and everybody goes to lunch at the same time. I I. I think that would be the easiest way to make sure everybody gets their lunch break. And that the city's not bearing the cost of more overtime on those days when there is only two people that can be in the office.
But there's four y'all in the office.
Right now, we have an employee that's out, and I'm not sure when she's returning. And I've been working on audit stuff and all that, and I'm having to do her job and mine, and. So sometimes it's not feasible for all of us to be in the office at the same time.
How did you do when there was only three girls in the office?
I don't know.
We never closed city hall down before.
On the days that we end up with just two girls, can we just close that day for an hour? Or does it have to be consistent?
Well, I how you gonna get that saying you'll get that announcement to the public?
Yeah, yeah, that if it's sporadic, they're not expecting that time. That's why I was requesting for us all to do it. Every day, everybody goes to lunch at the same time. We're fully staffed when we're here. We're.
How how much?
Say something.
Go ahead.
Um, so what what if? Don't don't we kind of touch Mr. Teles? He's in his office, so when you guys move away, he can't just come in and be a second person just sitting into that person.
Well, the only issue, the only issue with that is sometimes we get bombarded. And if there's only one person that can take care of customers. We get there's it's too much.
My concern with that is that we're if you're closing for an hour, then what if that? Customer needs to come in on their lunch break or something to pay their utility bill and it's holes.
Well, that's why I was thinking from one to two, because normal lunch breaks are twelve to one.
Well, my lunch break at this school is at one thirty.
Oh.
If I get that, but it's okay, but yeah.
So.
You get thirty minutes.
How much? How much more you got going on?
I'm still working on finishing the one and the next one's starting, so.
Yeah, that's pretty.
Doing the work of, yeah, probably three.
And you're doing that while you. Release relieving it because you're short staffed and you got to do a bad post to honor.
Yep.
You're starting twenty five.
No, it's not. It's not ready to start yet. Remember, we were behind from the twenty three. Twenty four.
No, that's.
Doesn't alleviate the problem.
But I don't normally take payments and do that and that kind of thing.
I understand that.
Then you're asking, yeah, you're kind of asking Larry, you're putting Larry in position there more by bringing him out.
Well, I just.
Is it something? We need to make a decision on tonight, actually.
It would help, but I mean.
I just I really don't want to close the office. Um, but I totally see where you're coming from, and you're in a position right now with everything.
Let me ask you this. Could you bring Colleen in?
Same position as Larry. She doesn't take payments. She doesn't answer the phone. She doesn't know that it answers to any questions. So if it's yes or no.
One of the ones that's going to lunch. Takes a payment, right? Then you bring Colleen in, the ones who who won't go stay here takes the payment, and she just going to be there to ride here. So just keep a employee here that does a payment.
I I understand what you're saying, and on a non-busy day, that would work perfectly. But there's days where I'm telling you, everybody wants to come in all at the same time, and it's always that timeframe. When we don't have anybody, when we don't have all the backup in the office. So it was this is just my idea to try to make things a little bit easier. That way, number one, the city's not paying the overtime for the hour, because if we don't, if we can't offer them now, we we gotta pay them. So. That's just my thought process.
Melissa still coming in at seven thirty?
She comes in at seven. She works still four. That's to get the day from the day before completed before the doors open.
I don't I don't understand the difference between when you had three girls here. Instead of four.
Well, we didn't have a brand new system that everybody's still learning. That I'm trying to work all the kinks out on. And audits that are behind because of changing to a new system that had a lot of kinks in it.
For years, this office was run on three girls.
On a two thousand twelve system, Mark.
Good. And. And we also on with Melissa on the CCPW side, we're also we're also working on a new system. It's a that has required some. A little I feel like Sean. Actually, we sit here and pay the electric bill. We're closed.
Well, the drop box.
There'll be a whole line of people, one one person to wait on them. That's all I can tell you.
I mean, if you just drop off payment, the the. The drop box is always available, but I I'm still.
I really don't want to close the office, but can we? And I know Colleen has a lot on her plate, but can we kind of try to cross train Colleen a little bit? Or is that going to be too much work? I mean, that's just going to add more work to you.
I might as well just stay here and not work and work through my lunches at that point.
Hold on a minute. Hold on. Brad, Colleen works for you. What's your what's your thought process?
And if you need somebody right now, it's no, we're training somebody to.
Yeah.
Training. Because. Well, it's really more body to have two people here.
Well, you need to have two people here too, just for the safety issue.
That's why we do it.
So right now, it's on its two y'all or three y'all?
Right now, it's three of us, but I like with all the stuff that I'm doing, I I can't really help a whole lot in the front.
In the future, we can cross train.
He's here. I I don't know.
Don't don't say it.
Permission at all myself.
He knows I'm kidding.
Majority of cities and stuff, they do this. They close for one hour for lunch because they don't want to. Have to split the whole day apart with lunches all for half the day. I mean, if you really look at it, we have three people in the office. We got to send one and then one and then one, and we do our lunch breaks, so that's three hours out of the day. In the the busiest gaps of the day that we're losing people in. But it's y'all's y'all's decision. It's just my thought process to help alleviate a little bit of stress.
So how do we take the lunches now? How does it work?
Well, when we're fully staffed, it's two people and then two people.
So two take lunch at the same time.
So when it's only just three, it's like every other hour.
It's like from eleven thirty to twelve thirty, twelve thirty to one thirty, one thirty, two thirty. It's like the whole day, basically.
We're going to discuss this more. We're going to put something in motion. If we're going to pay the extra time for then the overtime? Or we're going to do something different?
Can't just be temporary. Please. Set something in motion to till we.
We can cross train somebody.
Let let me, and you have no idea how long.
I can't even get information myself, so.
I'm not really sure. I think it should be something set temporarily right now. Because apparently she's under stress. It's a lot. She's doing two jobs, and we know that Ali is not a joke.
That joke that all it needs, we got to finish that all.
It needs to be finished.
We're we're walking the top right there.
With trying to relieve somebody for lunch break and people not want to come to work, or they got something that's going, whatever's going with them, not they're not being at work, it's not fair to her. So I want to put it in motion temporarily right now to have them just hold it for hold it for an hour.
From.
Let's do it from one to two.
To two.
Okay.
Our second.
So the motion by Sean is that. On a temporary basis. Say three months. That we all right until the end of the year.
End of the calendar year.
End of the calendar year. Thank you. From. We close city hall from one to two. For lunch. Any for any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Ashley, you got anything else?
We'll start when.
As soon as.
You need a break?
I need a break from life.
Hold on. We're gonna we're gonna we're gonna. What's it called? We're gonna take a break. We're gonna take a ten minute break. We're gonna recess.
I'm sorry.